Hi there everybody, the time is 5:31 PM. Today is Tuesday, July 22, 2025. We're here for the regular session of the Capella City Council. We do have a quorum present, so I'm calling the meeting to order. We will be convening into executive session in the first floor conference room. At the end of the executive session, I'll come back out and announce that we're moving into work session, at which time the public will be invited and encouraged to join us. Thank you very much.
You
Howdy, everybody. The time is six seventeen PM. We have adjourned from executive session and we will be moving into work session in the first floor conference room. The public is invited and encouraged to join us. Thank you very much.
We're here for the work session. We have three agenda items. Citizens comments will not be heard during work session, but will be heard during the regular session. Our three agenda items are a discussion of the agenda. We're gonna hear from Jennifer Rodriguez and we're gonna hear from our city financial advisor. Anybody have any comments on the agenda, questions, concerns, consent? Anybody have any comments on the agenda, questions, concerns, consent agenda? We have several public hearings. Any questions or comments? Ramesh.
Quick question. On the topic of bike helmets, have we heard from any residents, any positive or negative or not?
Yes, I did. I got a very pointed email saying that we needed to strengthen our e-bicycle and helmet laws to include poor people.
I heard similar comment supporting what we're doing. I was wondering if there's anything against that proposal.
So, not that I'm aware of. The chief will be making a presentation in the regular item, so.
Mr. Mark Lamb sent me very specific comments this past week, so. All right, anybody have anything else? That'd be a fair question, Ramesh, for the chief when he gets here. All right, item B is legislative update by Jennifer Rodriguez. Jennifer, welcome. Sorry we had to put you off a couple of weeks. I apologize. That was my fault.
No, not at all. Appreciate that you happened. It's here tonight. And since I can see the slides. If I can see myself, I don't know if we're in it. But John, I are here together. John Cole.
We see you.
Okay, well, good. All right. If we're going in and out, it's because we're sharing this little screen in front of me. But thank you, Mayor, council members, and I appreciate y'all having us here this evening to talk about the most recent legislative session. And then we'll kind of go into where we are with the special session that kicked off yesterday. Goes without saying for John, I'm sure we really appreciate the opportunity to work on your behalf here in Austin. And so, we're just gonna give a brief overview or review of the legislative session that ended back in June. Touch on the current special session and then we'll answer or follow up with answers to any questions y'all might have. And we can go on to the next slide, please. Okay. All right, so here, I drew together the bill statistics from session, all the way from filed to veto. And the big takeaways from here are that eight thousand seven hundred plus bills filed. That was a new record over the previous record from two thousand twenty-three. And then what you see there, the governor got a little over twelve hundred of those bills. And that's about fourteen percent. And then going on down, you see the vetoes. That's lower than the number of bills he vetoed in twenty-three, but higher than other sessions. So, pretty significant there. The big takeaway for me from this is that eighty-seven hundred, that's a lot of bills. And I think we're gonna continue to see these numbers grow with the advancements in technology and specifically the use of AI that we see people using to write bills. Something that was employed more even this session than previous sessions was filing bills that were what we call non-leg council drafts. And that's not necessarily any new tactic, but it's just being used more often. And the way that works is our legislative council has to turn every bill into their own version before the bill gets a hearing. So even when we see bills that aren't well-written, because someone came up with it, maybe using AI, they do, before they get a hearing, have to have it go through that process. And then, as I mentioned, that's about fourteen percent that got to the governor. And so, that's the other big takeaway. That's pretty comparable to the last several sessions. The legislature has passed anywhere from about fourteen to sixteen percent of the bills that they file onto the governor. And I think that that largely reflects, excuse me, that this is a one hundred forty-day session and there's only so much they can do during that period when you take into account all the rules that apply. So that's probably gonna be about where we stay with that. Okay, we can go on to the next slide. And then, so here, you know, heading into session, we had a pretty good idea of what the big issues were gonna be because they were campaigning on them. Or when session opened, the governor had his state of the state. So we knew what his big issues were gonna be. We knew from the special sessions that followed two thousand twenty-three that the education savings account was going to be the issue. And then we had our governor had issued a statement with forty bills that were his priorities. So we kind of knew what that would look like. And these were the big ones that I've highlighted here or really represented the personality of our legislative session. The budget, that, you know, that is the number one issue for lawmakers when they come to Austin every session. Three hundred eighty-eight billion dollar budget representing all funds. And that's gonna provide the funding for a lot of the things listed here, including the property tax relief, the education savings account, public school funding, water infrastructure, and other large programs. Education and Health and Human Services are the two biggest items that are part of our state budget. And then just wanted to note here that our legislature did not tap into the Economic Stabilization Fund or what's also called the rainy day fund. That's kind of been typical of our current legislature. They try not to go into that. Just earlier this week, Acting Comptroller Kelly Hancock, he issued, what do they call that, biennial revenue estimate? He provided an updated one to the legislature in advance of this special session. And he noted that that rainy day fund should reach over twenty-eight billion dollars by the end of the two thousand twenty-seven budget. So, that will, for the first time, exceed the cap that is on that and the legislature will have some decisions to make. I will say also that as far as these big issues, the governor, at the end of session, right after he finished the veto period, he said that legislation related to all seven of the issues that he designated as emergencies at the beginning of session passed. So that were, that was the education savings account bill, property tax relief, water investment, teacher pay raises, career training, bail reform and creation of the Texas Cyber Command, which is gonna be housed down in San Antonio. Those were all things he mentioned in January. And then Lieutenant Governor Patrick also touted successes of most of his forty priorities. He, you know, they all passed the Senate. And then with the exception of the THC bill, which was taken up today in Senate State Affairs, that was the only thing that he was sure to mention was a failure for there. And then additionally, before we change slides, additionally, I just wanted to note that earlier this summer, that Secretary of State Jane Nelson, she drew the ballot order for the seventeen proposed amendments to the Texas Constitution that the legislature passed. So Texans, you and I are gonna vote on each of these amendments November fourth. And so this includes a lot of the matters that were part of the, oh my gosh, property tax relief, the dementia prevention and research institute, bail reform. There are a lot of issues in there, some issues related to Texas State Technical College. But seventeen of those items, November fourth. We can go on to the next slide. Okay, and I will let John talk, by the way, y'all. Sorry.
I'm good. No worries.
I had this prepared and I got the bonus that he was able to join, so when we finish that. But anyways, here, these are just, you know, since session adjourned in June, we've already had announcements made. Actually, at least one of these was made during session. And that was Senator Mays Middleton announced several months ago that he was going to, or he is running for Attorney General. And that came after, of course, Attorney General Paxton announced officially that he is going to be running for US Senate. So we've got a lot of announcements going on by lawmakers and then statewide elected officials. But looking at this list, what stands out to me is there are only two here that are true retirements and those are Senators Burwell and Nichols. Everybody else that you see listed on the top or bottom list are running for an alternative elected position. So that top list of senators triggers a lot of what goes on in the bottom. The filing deadline for primaries in Texas, it runs November eighth through December eighth. So we'll probably see more announcements. There's probably at least one other that John told me could be on this list, but it wasn't official as of this afternoon, so we'll hold off. But the other thing to note, and I have a couple of asterisks there. There are Senator Huffman and Senator Johnson, along with Middleton, they are all running for Attorney General. That has to be a first, but it's just the way the seat has opened up. But Huffman and Johnson, they have what we call a three-shot at this because their Senate seat is not on the ballot in twenty-six. So, if they lose, they are returning to the legislature presumably for the twenty-seven legislative session. And then I also put the asterisk by Jones down in the House. She's Houston. She's running for the congressional seat that is open as a result of Congressman Sylvester Turner's passing earlier this year. It's not quite clear if she's running for the special election, which is in November, or if she's running for in the primary next year. You may know that, but yeah, so there may be some shuffling. Some of these folks will have an opportunity to run in these special elections. There will be a special election in November for Kelly Hancock's seat as well. And so folks may have an opportunity to see where they land and then make their decision for the primaries. All right, we can go to the next one. Oh, and then I will just mention though, so Senator Hancock, he, you know, he resigned last month and then was sworn in as Chief Clerk of the Comptroller's Office. And this allowed him to preside over the responsibilities of the Comptroller's Office as of July first, when Glenn Hager took over as Chancellor of the Texas A and M University System. So Hancock has since announced that he will be running for Comptroller in two thousand twenty-six. And he joins already announced candidates that include Kristi Kradic, who is on the Railroad Commission, and Don Huffines, former state senator up from North Texas that y'all familiar with. Like the senators I mentioned, Kristi Kradic also has a free run at this Comptroller seat because her Railroad Commission position is not on the ballot next year. And so here we are. Now we're here at the first called special session. These are basically the rules, if you will, of a special session. The governor is in charge of when it happens, what's gonna be on the agenda. He can do it as many times as he likes. We saw four in two thousand twenty-three. They are limited to thirty days. And so August nineteenth is the final day of this one. We are on day two. And the governor can add any issues at any time. He has done that in the past. But we are starting out with eighteen issues. And I think that, you know, he announced June twenty-third, the day after the veto, the morning after, that he was going to call special session four yesterday. But at that time, I think a lot of us often thought, well, THC, because it was a down-to-the-wire veto. And then, you know, he listed a few other things at that time. Of course, since then, we've had the tragic floods in the whole country. And that's kind of taken precedent with a lot of folks. But eighteen, I think, caught a lot of people off guard. So we'll see what all they get done. They started yesterday. The House was in session for just a few minutes before they adjourned until Thursday. Speaker Burrows indicated that committees on the floods and redistricting are gonna meet this week. And in fact, the Joint Committee on the Floods meets tomorrow. The House is gonna meet together. They do not have a bill before them. As far as we can tell, there's not, there's been some related bills filed, but there does not appear to be a leadership bill on flooding. And they do not have a bill tomorrow regardless, in front of them at committee. And then redistricting, the House has scheduled three hearings between Friday and next Monday, including the one Monday that's gonna be taking place in Arlington. And that's the congressional redistricting. Again, they don't have a bill. There's no maps floating out there at least that we've seen yet. And then the Senate, they met for multiple hours yesterday. I think it was close to five o'clock before they finished. And they were largely debating the resolution that has the rules that will govern their redistricting process. And so that was ultimately voted along the party lines. But, oh, okay. You can announce that in a minute. But the redistricting for the Senate is gonna follow a different process. They are meeting three times, four times, they're meeting four times. And it will all be in Austin. Those hearings start Monday and conclude next Tuesday. Today, State Affairs in the Senate met. They, the Senate referred bills yesterday, only referred three bills. They were all the State Affairs. They heard them all today. THC, which took up most of the day from about nine AM to four PM today. And then they did hear Mays Middleton's taxpayer funding lobbying ban. And then one other bill on an election law bill. So, that's where we are. I'm gonna, I'm gonna, that concludes the review. And then I will stop there. You can turn the slides off and I'll just say thank you to council staff just for coming up here during session, for always being quick to get us feedback when we needed it. We had really good, you know, working relationships with your senators, your representative. And y'all being part of that process is very helpful. So, I'll pause there. John has a breaking news report and then we'll answer any questions y'all have.
So, breaking, here's the breaking news, going back to our changes in the legislature. State rep and part of leadership Giovanni Cabriglioni announced about ten minutes ago that he is not seeking reelection. That was put out on Twitter. So that's someone that's been relatively easy to work with for us and responsive, at least a good ear to listen to the various things that we've had to take to him with regard to Capitol over the last couple of sessions. He's not seeking reelection. Also, I just wanted to, even though they're on the first called special session, even though there are eighteen items on the bill, if you'll, on the call, if you'll look so far, there have been forty-two House, forty-two Senate bills filed and one hundred and seventy-six House bills filed. Many of them relate to those eighteen called items, but not all of them do. There's no requirement that a bill filed actually relate to the call. It just, it's subject to a point of order if it moves very far during that session. But it gives members the opportunity to file a bill near and dear to their heart and show that effort for the voters.
Yeah, and along those lines, and I think there's two more slides actually, and it is just the next two are those eighteen items. But along those lines, the House has reserved bills one through thirty and the Senate one through twenty. So, we're not cheating, but we're really gonna focus on those low number of bill.
Did we raise her?
Because.
Jennifer, hang on. I think we're. I know. Jennifer, I don't know if you can hear us, but we have lost your audio. Try turning the video feed off. Sometimes that will help with the bandwidth.
We've got video. Oh, no.
Ooh, we lost you.
No, no, I was turning it off to leave that held.
See, you can hear. Yeah, there we go.
Yep. We can hear you now.
Okay, I'm sorry, y'all. I don't know how much y'all lost us on.
We lost most of your, you started talking about.
The low number of bills.
The low number of bills and then.
Like the priority.
You started getting into the list of them and we lost you at that point.
Okay, okay, good. That makes me feel better. Yeah, so we're just saying that bills one through twenty in the Senate and one through thirty are priority bill numbers for the Lieutenant Governor and Speaker. So those are the ones that are gonna jump out to John and me and all the other lobbyists when we see a bill number dropped with that. That tells us that that probably has some kind of stamp of approval on it. But meanwhile, we are monitoring a large list of bills for the city that would impact municipalities if they advanced.
Those specific bills, one through twenty in the Senate, have already been assigned and the Lieutenant Governor has said who they are, who's filing them and what they relate to. Those would be the bills on these priority topics that'll move. Those bills haven't been filed in the House yet. They're still, you know, trying to determine the best way forward on those priority issues. But it's unlikely that bill number one seventy-two of the one hundred and seventy-six that are filed, you know, the. the bills that are going to move during a special session, as Jennifer said, are going to be those low number priority bills by both the Speaker, you know, that are reserved by the Speaker and the Lieutenant Governor.
So what's the view on the first one on this page, the taxpayer-funded lobbying ban?
Well, it was voted out of the Senate earlier this afternoon, probably about an hour and a half ago, but no surprise. There's a lot of similar bills that have been filed in the House, but again, not one of those low number ones yet. It would be odd if it did not go to House State Affairs where it went during the regular session. And if that's the case, I think Chairman King didn't, you know, he didn't give it a hearing. So he's going to have his hands full. He's chairing the flood or co-chairing the flood committee. He'll also have the THC bill coming to him. So I don't know that there's an appetite at all in the House.
I would agree with that. Well, I think there's an appetite among some members of the House, but I'm not sure that Chairman King at State Affairs, this is a priority for him during this 30-day window.
And just another one, kind of of a personal interest of mine, the title theft and deed fraud. How's that one going to go?
So that bill was apparently one that was vetoed during the regular session. I feel like this was a Senator West bill. I'll have to go back and look, but there were a few bills that were vetoed and the governor basically gave a prescription for how to fix them and said he would put them back on the call, and he did.
It was a Senator West bill. He has been assigned that bill again. It's going to be Senate Bill 15. And I tend to think that it will move out of the Senate rather rapidly. Senator West is the only Democrat senator that's been assigned one of these low number bills. And so I kind of feel like that they will move that bill because it did pass out of the Senate at Bochambers during the regular session.
Thank you.
Any other questions for us?
Do you think this is going to end with only one special session? Or do you see it extending on into the future?
I think that depends on whether everything gets done. And that seems to be potentially a moving target for the audience that wants it. So.
Okay, we have a question from Don Carroll.
Hey, Jennifer, John, thanks so much for everything y'all do for us. The items focused on flood management, flood control, the Hill Country relief, anything like that, is that going to overshadow a lot of these other priorities? Or how's that really changing the dynamics of the session?
Well, I mean, there's plenty, I think it's on the next slide, it lists the actual items that the governor put in the call related to flood. Again, they're having a hearing tomorrow, a joint hearing, and so we'll be tuning in, but they don't have a bill yet. And John has this list over here that was just published as the Senate bill. So I'm not sure, I haven't seen language, but I think that whatever's passed will ultimately be broad. And so we got to look at that for y'all and see how that might affect, you know, cities that are far from flood emergencies, right? So to be determined. You know, there's a lot of thought that some of this could be dealt with outside of a special session, that there's enough powers there that could do that without intervention.
I would say, I think it's indicative this afternoon, Lieutenant Governor published, Senate Bill 1, Senate Bill 2, and Senate Bill 3 all relate to flood, natural disaster preparation. Senate Bill 1 is natural disaster preparation and recovery. Senate Bill 2 is flood emergency communications and warning. And Senate Bill 3 is relief flooding for the Hill Country, relief funding, excuse me, for the Hill Country. Those are the first three bills that the Lieutenant Governor has reserved for that item. So I tend to think you're going to see some immediate action out of the Senate and the House is going to come along behind because, you know, there's a lot more voices that have a say over on the West Side of the building.
Well, thanks, it's curious, it'll make it for a curious session, just the fact that that's such fresh of mind and certainly the real toll in the Hill Country, not to mention the political aspect of it. So it certainly is going to cast an interesting shade over this session. And I'd be curious if it doesn't lead us to another session.
All right, we also have a question from Kevin Neville's.
Hey, Jennifer, John, thank you guys so much. Just a question about, obviously, we named off several people running for the comptroller seat. As you know, we are very familiar with the comptroller, the previous comptroller. Any indication on where our interim comptroller or the candidates land on sales tax sourcing? Any insight you could provide us on that?
I guess that's me.
That would be you, John, yes, sir.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So Kristi, neither one of them, so officially, none of the candidates for comptroller have taken any type of position on that matter. Obviously, there have been some, destination sourcing tends to negatively impact a lot of the oil field service providers. And as a result, and some of the communities that are associated with the oil patch. One of our biggest supporters in the House for the last three sessions that we've been fighting this was Speaker Kradic. And so I have not specifically talked or asked Railroad Commissioner Kradic what her specific position is on that. But I give that, I tell you that with, you know, to give you some context there. It's, we've never let that bill get over to the Senate in the last three sessions. So former Chairman Hancock, former Senator Hancock, has never had to take an official position on that. I do know that we've done some work with his office. They've said specifically, we are not interested in carrying that bill or being a sponsor of it if it got over, so that bodes well for us. I know with now comptroller Hancock's private company that he owns and manages, they file a, their sales tax return lists only one place of business where they allocate all of their sales to. It is not a storefront that people walk into and make purchases in person. The rule and the bill would drastically change that. I've got a meeting that we're, I'm in the process of trying to schedule with Ms. Hancock. Have not been able to do that yet. He's kind of drinking from a fire hose, and especially now with the special session. But hope to have that kind of conversation with him as soon as possible. I have not had any conversations with former Senator Huffines on this topic. He has supported quite a bit over the last several cycles, a dramatic increase in the sales tax in order to buy down property taxes or eliminate property tax. It's unclear what this, what a change in sourcing, how he views that. So I said a whole lot and didn't answer your question, and I'm sorry. But there's no real way to know until you come up, and I have not done that yet.
I would actually say you gave us a lot of information. Those insights are valuable. So look forward to seeing how this progresses and seeing what is in the future for us. So thank you very much.
One thing to note, the staff at the comptroller's office that was also driving this or had a lot of input in the rule as well as Chairman Myers' bill, that hasn't changed.
All right, Don?
Hey, real quick, on cut property taxes, you know, that's a real overriding generic topic. So is that related specifically to school tax benefit? Or is that talking about limiting spending or, you know, spending limits on cities and counties? Or what, is there, has that really been defined? Or is there specific legislation that came forth in the regular session that's coming back up? Or where do you think that's headed?
There's only one of the Lieutenant Governor's priority bills, which is Senate Bill 9, cutting property taxes. So I assume that's cutting rates or another buy-down. Senator Benning Court, he was laying out bills today and in State Affairs all day, but he did step out to meet with and do a panel with the affordable housing coalition conference here in Austin today. He announced that it was still his priority to try to find ways to lower the property tax burden on Texans. The comptroller Hancock allowed, there was roughly another $3 billion in revenue for this cycle that they might be able to do some things with. Rittlarch, what those things are and where they go, I'm not sure. The governor's call, the governor's proclamation on reducing property taxes is very broad and vague. And some members of those filed bills in the House that are out there involve limiting the ability of local government entities to increase their budgets. There's been talk that I've heard about lowering from, what, 3.5% to 2.5% or maybe even 2% from that standpoint. So I think there's going to be a scattershot approach. We're not really going to know what that is until we get there. What I do know is, what I do know, I don't know this, but I suspect that the governor put this particular item on the call to, as a, to help some of the members of the legislature in their primary runs, that they can file bills. And I'm not necessarily sure that he expects more to be done or that it will be, if there is another special session, that they would keep trying. But I think this was camouflage for some of the other things that are on the call.
Yeah, well, that's helpful. But that one would be curious to pay attention to, just to see if anything does rear its head along the way. Because there's about half a dozen different methods, you know. They always say cut property tax, and there's six different ways they're talking about. So I'd be curious if anything pops up.
We're watching it like a hawk. There's not a whole lot more money for the state to buy down things with the potential future revenue estimates coming in a little more flat. I think the comptroller's office and the governor are going to be a little cautious about that moving forward on just great buy downs. And to do any more than they have already, you're going to look at some structural changes to the tax code, I think, which I'm fairly certain there's not an appetite for that for everyone.
Okay, thanks.
All right, listen, thank you very much for your update. We look forward to hearing the after the special session updates. So appreciate your time this evening.
Yeah, thank y'all so much, and have a good evening.
All right.
Thank you.
Bye.
All right, Item 3C is a presentation by the City of Capella's Financial Advisor. I'm guessing that must be Jason.
I'm going to introduce.
Oh, Ms. Tina.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Jason Hughes, who is our Senior Managing Director of Hilltop Securities, the City's financial advisor, is here. This is a follow-up to the May 6th council retreat where I presented some information on parameter bond sales. And so Jason is here to provide you some more information as you had requested. And I have a handout, so he has a presentation that I will go ahead and...
So where's your office now? In downtown Dallas.
On Harwood?
Here on Harwood, yes.
716?
717.
717.
Now in the Hilltop Securities Tower.
I was on floor number 14 of that building for a long time.
We have 30 through 34. We entered into that lease about six months before COVID hit, so. Timing's everything. But Mayor and Council, good to be with you this afternoon. As Kim said, this goes back to the May meeting, which you had some questions that are related really towards going towards the refunding, how you can sell debt, and specifically how you can approve debt. So what I'll do is I'll talk about how you can approve that debt, and I'll talk a little bit about the refundings as well as where they stand now. So normally what happens if we're going to issue debt will price bonds the morning of a council meeting. The nice thing about that is we have a bid to underwrite from the underwriter or the purchaser. That means your coupons, your yields, your maturities, your payment schedule set. I come that night and that is subject to your approval. So that you have the ability to approve it on that night. That's great. The only bad thing about that is that locks us into a single day in which to price that debt. Right, so if we're in a situation where the market moves away from us, i.e. interest rates go higher, if we have some kind of disruption in the market, then we're kind of stuck with, okay, we either have to go ahead and price the bonds today, or we have to pull it, or we have to look at pricing two weeks from now whenever you have another council meeting. So the nice thing about this is a parameter bond sale, and this is what is on this first page here, is you can also approve, again, what's known as a parameter bond sale, where you would approve a set of parameters. And then assuming that we meet each and every one of those parameters, we can move forward and price those bonds at any time. So that's the nice thing, is it just gives us maximum flexibility. If you look at times like what we have experienced this year as far as volatility, we had a period mid-April where rates went up anywhere from 6 tenths to 8 tenths of 1%, which is a massive, massive move in the municipal bond market. They've since come down somewhat, but we had that time period again where they went up substantially within about a three-day period. So significant volatility. The other thing too is if you have a lot of debt that's in the market. And right now, you see Texas school districts in particular, because of some of the bills that passed, specifically Senate Bill 4 or Senate Bill 23, are rushing to get to the market. So there's a flood of paper in the market. Obviously, as you know, most school districts have 831 fiscal year ends. Most cities, just like yourself, have 930 fiscal year ends. So you see in that summertime, again, there's a lot of capital improvement funding via bonds. So if you have things like that, then the parameter bond sale can certainly make sense. Because again, what it's meant to do is to give you, Council, comfort that you get at least a minimum transaction with the hope that we can price in a favorable market, that we can move that pricing if we need to, whether it's getting savings for refunding, whether it's getting the best interest rate on a new money financing. So assuming that you approve those parameters, what you actually do is you delegate final pricing authority to pricing officers. Typically, that's your city manager and your director of finance. And then once you do that, that puts that bond issue into a day-to-day mode. And so we go through the same process, just like if we were doing what I talked about, how we normally do it, as far as talking with rating agencies, putting together an official statement, things of that nature. So again, it simply gives us the flexibility to move that pricing as we need to. So, and before I go from there, a very high-level summary, obviously, but let me ask, any questions I can answer about that before I kind of talk a little bit about the refunding?
So how long would this parameter be valid for?
So you can do it anywhere up to a year. Typically, what we do is 180 days. And that's what I like to do because I personally, I like to have the flexibility to go roughly half a year. But in truth, what's going to happen is, let's say the rates go up substantially or they come back down, I'm going to be talking with Kim, right? So Kim can inform you, or I can even come back and inform you, depending on the market movement. But once you get past 180 days, you start getting stale. So 180 days is what I typically recommend, although again, you could go up to a full year.
For my knowledge, these days among the cities in Texas, how many are using the parameter bond sale versus the old-fashioned...
Great question. So two things, and it's not on here. One, if you're doing a refunding or refinancing, you can use a parameter bond sale no matter what. If you're doing it for new money purposes, you have to hit a couple or you have to check a couple of boxes, which is to have $100 million in debt outstanding, which Capella meets that, and then have a rating and... which Coppell meets that, and then have a rating in the, uh, two highest rating categories, which you obviously check that box. What I have seen now for most of my larger, more sophisticated issuers like yourself is I am moving to a parameter sale. And, you know, to give you some context of that, back in twenty twenty-three, one of my large city issuers here, we were moving along and to be very frank, and I won't mention their name, but the, um, management didn't want to do that. They wanted to have, they wanted city council to be able to know exactly what they were approving. We got to that Monday, we went to price and the market was a complete disaster. And so we had to pull that and we pulled that and it cost us basically a month before we could come back because they only meet one time a month. So within that context, that's why I had moved to this. And again, just given the uncertainty that's out there, everyone knows, you know, whether it's tariffs, um, whether it's the different global conflicts that have been going on that have had impact to the market, I've moved to this just to give that maximum flexibility. So one of the things that really brought about this discussion was again, uh, talking about potential refundings that the city has available. So what I did is just put this together, what I titled Evolution of a Refunding. Whenever the city sells debt, we put in place a call date. And all that call date simply means is whenever an investor buys that, they know how long they can hold it for. And then at a date certain and beyond that, you, the city can take that debt away from them. And so the nice thing is it gives them certainty that they know it will be outstanding for a minimum period of time, so they can hit their duration targets. But it helps you as far as your flexibility of moving forward in the future. Whether that's, you can pay that debt off if you have excess, uh, cash available, so you can pay it off in its entirety or in part. You could refinance it, which is similar to what we're talking about, where we issue at a six percent, we refund that to a four percent, just like you refi-, uh, refinance your home mortgage. Or what's not quite, um, what's not used that much is if you have to restructure that for legal or financial purposes. Again, what we're talking about is really refunding that for savings. Um, one of the things too, that changed back at the very end of twenty seventeen, whenever, uh, the tax bill, the then tax bill was put in place, is it did away with advanced refundings. And all that simply means is whenever you issue tax exempt debt, in order to refinance that on a tax exempt basis, we have to be within ninety days of that call date. And so that's why you have the two issues that we're looking at for the city, as well as the CRDC's issue, where they are now what we call currently callable, and we would be within those ninety days. So said another way, we could do it on a tax exempt basis. Obviously, if we're issuing tax exempt debt, lower interest rate. We can do taxable refundings too, if we have to, and if interest rates are such, but that taxable rate will be at a higher interest rate. So that's one of the main things that we're looking at is just keeping it, uh, those tax exempt bonds, tax exempt. Oh, yes, sir. Sorry.
Jason, uh, of course, one more question on the parameter bond sale.
Yes, sir.
Uh, once we make a decision and then give you the guidelines, now that is public information, right? So buying entities like a retirement fund now know the max that, that we are willing to pay. So what is their incentive to go anything below than, than the max that we will approve?
So when you say they know the max that you're willing to do, so whenever we do that, one, your, um, action is public knowledge. And that's a big thing, and then we can't tell one sector of the market one thing and withhold that information from another, right? So the nice thing about it is you obviously have open meetings. So any investor could go and see that you made this motion, right, to move forward with a parameter refunding. Remember that there's a, there's literally thousands of buyers in the municipal bond market. And so what we're trying to do in the situation of a refinancing is go into the market, capture the then available, uh, rates. Those rates are going to be based on whatever the market is at that time. So I have not seen a situation, Councilman, where you had an investor that basically looks at it and says, oh, well, they're going to do this, so we're going to have this higher inflated rate. The rate will be the market rate based on the participants in the market at that day. Does that, does that make sense?
That makes sense, sir. What, what you're saying is that the market is large enough that it's more market-driven and they're not going to adjust it based on what we have approved?
Absolutely, absolutely. Cause you have, I mean, I just had a big bond issuance, uh, two weeks ago, and there were literally hundreds of investors that were looking at it. And I think as far as number of investors that came in and put in bids was seventy to seventy-five. So it, it is a very liquid, very large-scale, very transparent market.
Thank you.
Certainly. So the last thing here is just some suggested parameters. If you wanted to move forward with this, there's obviously no agenda or action item tonight. The two issues that the CIA, or pardon, that the city has that is currently outstanding are the twenty thirteen certificates of obligation and the twenty fifteen GO bonds. The, as you can see there, the parameters are listed down below. So that maximum par amount, nine million, two hundred and fifty thousand, and that's based on taking out all of the callable portions of those two issues. A three and a half percent interest rate. And just to provide some context there, if we were to price today, we'd probably be at about a three point two percent interest rate. Minimum savings of two percent. Whenever you get those savings, so we go in, we refinance, your savings are taken over time, right? So if you have a bond issuance and there's ten years remaining on it, typically we refund out for ten years. And you can certainly shorten it, you can do different things, but generally speaking, it's such. And so you're going to take those savings over a ten-year period annually. So you have a gross savings number, and then we have what we call a present value savings number that present values back those savings over that ten-year period in my example. That's what that two percent ties back to. And then you see the final maturity there, February first, twenty thirty-three. Again, that's the final maturity on your debt right now, so we wouldn't be extending it at all. Okay, so that's the city side. Over on the right-hand side is, uh, the CRDC and the sales tax revenue debt. There's one issue outstanding, the twenty fourteen. Again, that is currently callable, it is larger. So you can see there the maximum par amount, the recommended, uh, parameter for maximum par amount. It's twenty-two million maximum rate. It does go out a little bit longer, so that maximum rate would be higher with the same minimum refunding savings level of two percent. So if you would like, as far as next steps, what I would do is I would talk with bond counsel. They could put it on one of your future agendas. Certainly, you would obviously have to approve it, just again, like you would any, uh, bond issuance. Uh, but that would be just moving forward, uh, with that parameter bond sale, so.
Thank you, Mayor. Jason, just from my understanding, uh, when you talk about the minimum refunding savings of two percent.
Yes, sir.
So two percent of nine point two million dollars, so it's about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars over?
It's actually two percent of the amount, the total amount of bonds to be refunded, I think was around eight point nine to eight point nine five. And then I have a little bit in there to account for interest as well as cost. So it would be two percent of the refunded bond number.
So approximately a hundred and eighty thousand dollars over ten years?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Actually, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars is the present value of the total savings over ten years?
That's correct. The, it would be the present value savings, yes.
Thank you.
Any other, and one thing I should also point out, if you were to approve this, so all of the cost of issuance are contained within the refunding bond. So let's say that you approve it, interest rates go up one percent, we do nothing. Nothing happens to your debt, it stays as is, it's fixed rate debt. So there's no, there's no downside. If interest rates move away, other than we just wouldn't be able to refinance for savings, but we would have that a hundred and eighty day window to do so if interest rates came back down.
And so tonight was really for information purposes. If this is something that you'd want to do, you can let Mike know and we can take next steps then. But this was really just to address, uh, the additional questions that you have in the May sixth meeting.
Yes, I think you said this, but repeat for my benefit.
Yes, sir.
Each one of these would be refund, uh, refunded for this twenty thirty-three and twenty thirty-eight? Or would they be refunded for an additional twenty years?
No, 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 it would just be, so on the city GO debt in dark blue, our final maturity on our refunding bonds would be twenty thirty-three, just like it is now. So no extension. On the CRDC, it would be twenty thirty-eight, no extension of that debt.
Okay, thank you.
And, and the one thing I would add too, um, before closing is if, for whatever reason, council wanted to say, you know what? Let's, let's shorten our debt. I've had that happen a couple of times where council actually wanted to shorten the debt. We could absolutely do that as well. Again, what's more standard is just a straight refunding for savings with the same final maturity, but there's different things that we can do to structure that to meet your, uh, needs.
Your message?
Thank you, Mayor. With the tariffs and all the uncertainty in the market, and, uh, you know, I hear about money moving away from the bond market, does that mean that the rates would tend to go up?
So what's interesting over the last, um, let's call it six weeks, is we've actually seen the yield curve steepen, where we've had short-term interest rates come down, which helps this, right? Because this is relatively short-term debt, it's only eight years for the city GO debt, for example. Whereas we've seen long-term rates go up. So some of the refundings that I had, I'll give you an example. I had one of my cities where we had two refundings, one tax exempt, one taxable, where mid-April hits tariff, or tariff announcements, and they've been gone. And now they come back into the money because of that, uh, difference in the yield curve.
And one last question. The buyers of bond also are looking for a, uh, final maturity date, right? So if we sell this at, at these terms, uh, are we then limited from trying to refinance this for some time in the future?
So what we typically try and do is normally what you'll see is a nine-to-ten-year call on debt. And so for example, to your question on that city GO debt that has a twenty thirty-three final maturity, we might refund that and not have a call date in there because that would be an eight-year call. And once you start getting to eight years and you start shortening that, then the interest rate goes up, right? Because basically your buyers want to be compensated because they know that they're not going to hold it for that long. So that's one of the things that we're looking at is just the calculus, if you will, of what that does to the interest rate component. But generally speaking, if we have a nine-to-ten-year debt and longer, we will have a call date in there.
Thank you.
Sir. So we've had this question before, is there any downside to doing the refunding at this point on these, these two?
I don't think that there's any downside. Um, we are very close on the city GO debt to that two percent minimum savings. We're actually a little under on the CRDC right now. So the only thing right now that I would suggest looking at would be the city GO debt. But Mayor, to your question, there is no downside, there's no, certainly no downside on the rating side. It is literally just refinancing to save money.
Any other questions? Well, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
We always enjoy, enjoy, we always appreciate having you come.
I know you don't enjoy it, so, but thank you.
All right, the time is seven fourteen PM. We're at the end of the work session and we'll move into the regular session of the Coppell City Council in the council chambers at seven thirty.
The decisions needed to continue to improve the city. And Father, we're so grateful for this beautiful city that we have. And when we say these things, name Jesus Christ.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated.
Item number six is our citizens' appearance. We did not have anybody signed up to speak tonight, so we'll move on to item number seven, which is our consent agenda. Persons are, the consent agenda is routine in nature and is generally enacted by a single motion. Any item may be pulled by any council member and discussed separately. The items have been rolling through the, the display. Council, do you have any questions or comments for, on consent? I saw this council member Walker raise his hand.
I was going to.
Go right ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. This time I would move for approval of the consent agenda, items A through D.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second? Mayor Pro Tim Carroll. All in favor?
Walker Carroll Neves, Prem Kumar Hill, none opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. All right, we have two items up next that are going to be presented by Chief Danny Barton. We have item number eight. Chief, you're up. This is consider approval of an ordinance amending Chapter nine, general regulations, Article nine dash eleven, parks and recreation codes, section nine eleven dash twelve, roller skates, roller blades, inline skate, skateboards, coasters, and bicycles by adding a new subsection, subsection C to prohibit the use of e-bicycles on the biodiversity education center trail system in its entirety or upon any unimproved surface located within Kapel Nature Park, Wagon Wheel Park, and authorizing the mayor to sign. That was a mouthful. Chief, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, tonight I'm, I'm here to discuss electric bikes and make recommendations on, can I do both items eight and nine together?
We will need to vote on them separately, but you can certainly present them together.
Okay. Thank you, sir. I'm sure as all of you know, and I know most of you know, we've received a lot of concern, complaints from citizens around electric bicycles in our community. And the citizens that are getting to me and probably to y'all are asking us or begging us to do something. You've got to do something about these electric bikes. And so I'm here tonight to explain that on these two actions, if, if we take these two actions tonight, it's about all that you can do as a governing body in terms of regulating these electric bikes in the community. And it's because of the way the legislation is written around electric bikes. So on the screen, this is five five one point one zero six of the traffic code regulates electric bikes. Now, we'll tell you elsewhere in the traffic code, electric bikes have not caught up to the other statutes. So that may come out in some, some questions, but, so if, if you see bullet A, the department, and that's not the police department, that's the Department of Public Safety, or a local authority, which is the city council, may not prohibit the operation of an electric bicycle on a highway that is used primarily by motor vehicles, which is all of the roads in our city. Okay? So they're saying that, that we cannot prohibit electric bikes on our roads. The second bullet is in an area in which the operation of non-electric bicycles is permitted. So anywhere a bicycle can go, an electric bicycle can go. And they've, they've made this so that, I'll get to that in a minute. So, but there's an unless, and this is what's dealing with item eight. Unless the area is a path that is not open to motor vehicles and has a natural surface tread made by clearing and grading the native soil without adding surfacing materials. So a nature trail. And so that's why we have the biodiversity education center, the nature trails behind there are nature trails, and we can regulate them. We already regulate bicycles back there, so we're just adding the electric bikes to the ordinance just to make everything up to date, right? And so that's, that's what that is. Now, as you can see, the department or the local authority may prohibit the operation of a bicycle on a sidewalk. But as we talked about in the work session a couple of months ago, if we do that, everybody on a bicycle, including the small children, will have to ride in the roadways because all bikes will be banned. And I know a lot of the complaints I get is about e-bikes on the sidewalks. And this is, this is the hangup that I have to explain to citizens is the, the way they wrote the law is we can't, we can't have two different laws for e-bikes and bicycles. And so, and again, you can establish speed limits on, on bike paths, but we talked about that too in the work session, that a lot of speed limit signs for probably little to no enforcement unless we set out there with radar guns. And I don't know that we're good, we, that's a good use of our resources, so. So the other thing that we talked about, which is item nine, is, is helmets. I can, and I'll get to what we've seen this summer with helmets, but currently the law is anyone fourteen years or younger that's on a bicycle must wear a bicycle helmet. And what I'm, what we're proposing is we move that to sixteen years of age or younger. And the reason being is that is how the state defines a child in the state of Texas is sixteen years or younger. Okay? And most of the cities, if not all, I didn't check every city, they just, in their ordinance, their bicycle helmet laws just say, a child, which, a child in Texas is anyone sixteen years or, or younger. So that's what we're proposing in item nine, is to bring that into today. I don't know, I've heard rumors of what the, why we made it fourteen decades ago, but I can't confirm those. I have no idea what the, where they came up with those numbers. Now, the e-bike riders do have to follow the rules of the road regardless of their age. They have to stop at stop signs. They have to stay on the right side of the road. They have to do all the things that every other bicyclist is required to do. And that is the job of the police department to enforce that. And, and I think our guys and girls have done a great job this summer. We were pretty active. And it wasn't just because we were getting a lot of calls, we were very proactive with the e-bike riders because you've, you've got unskilled riders going twenty to twenty-eight miles an hour on a, on a bike. And when you see them, it's almost shocking because they're going so fast, you, you feel the danger, right? And so we've spent a lot of time on that, and then we also spent a lot of time educating them on helmets. We saw a lot of kids on e-bikes that had helmets hanging from the handlebar. And so we were stopping them and saying, put, put the helmet on your head, and they would ask why. And we're like, well, it's the law. And the, and a lot of the kids were like, well, I didn't know it was against the law. And so, so we spent a lot of time doing practical in the field education. Our SROs had started doing it the last semester in school. And then our SROs are already gearing up to continue that education. I talked to a few SROs today, and they're, they're going to get with the principals of the campuses and see, you know, if, if, if we vote on the helmet law, we can let the parents know in the, in the early paperwork that parents are getting in the school year about those laws. And so we also teamed up with Life Safety Park. They put on a bicycles, a couple, three bicycle schools a year. They had one last week, and our traffic sergeant and our bicycle unit sergeant went out to help and assist. Wasn't a massive class, but it was still a class on e-bikes. And then together they've decided, let's do some more. So we're already scheduling more of those at Life Safety Park because we think it'll be beneficial. I'm not sure of the date, but it's, it's, it's right around the corner. And then, of course, enforcement, we're, we're not interested, we don't want to start giving kids tickets for everything. We, we can enforce the law just like we would with a car. But we think educate, I mean, e-bikes are a new thing. And it's just, I remember when e-scooters came on board, and we were like, what are we going to do? What are we going to do? It's a new thing. We think education efforts are going to be first. We haven't had a ton of accidents on e-bike, with e-bikes. I reached out to the fire department to see if we, pulling our data off of our computers is a little difficult, so there's a little bit of guessing. And the fire department said they, they think six of the accidents they responded to were e-bike wrecks. And I know personally of two that the police department responded to, which was probably two of their six. And so in fact, recently spoke to one of those citizens that got hit by the e-bike. That person had, the e-bike came off of a sidewalk into a crosswalk and, and, and hit the side of the car. And so luckily, that, that young child was wearing a helmet, so everything was fine. But we're working through it. Again, this is a new area for us, the police, as well. And, but, but one of my, one of my main messages was, let's do all we can do given the law that we have. And, and then my message to the community is, we, just be patient, and when you see kids crazy riding, I'll, I'll use my words, call us, and we'll send an officer out there. And hopefully, we can educate them before anything bad happens. So with that, I'll take any questions y'all have.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. Oh, wow. You're going to be busy. Mayor Pro Tim.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Chief. Just to clarify, and I know you said enforcement is one of the troubles on speed limits on bicycles, but just to sort of clarify, bicycles on the roads, I guess they're, the speed limit is whatever the roadway speed limit is, is that correct? They have to?
That's correct.
On sidewalks, though, is there a speed limit for bicycles today on sidewalks or not?
No.
Okay. That's what I was just wanting to clarify. I didn't know if there was already something in place for that, so. And I know enforcement becomes a big issue with speed limits on sidewalks, so I was just curious.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You bet.
Councilmember Walker?
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, could we go back to that slide that had the statute on it, please? Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. There you go.
That one. Yes, sir. I think so. Is that right? Yes. So I guess my question is, I was out, I was walking my dog out at Andy Brown East the other day, and a kid on an e-bike did a wheelie going about twenty-five miles an hour for about thirty yards. It was impressive, but dangerous and kind of scary to the people out there. So I was curious, when it says the department or a local authority may prohibit the operation of a bicycle on a sidewalk, could we prohibit the operation of a bicycle, or an e-bike, rather, on like a class of sidewalks, like those out at Andy Brown East and West, and not all sidewalks?
That would be a lawyer question.
Yes, sir, I know. It's, would our city attorney like to opine? He happens to be here.
I can, I can show you what my legal advisor wrote.
If, if you had a systematic way of defining a sidewalk from a trail system, maybe.
Could we say, we could prohibit it on any sidewalk within the confines of Andy Brown East and identify the park, Andy Brown West?
No. I think you'd have to make a dichotomy between a trail system and a sidewalk.
So it'd be just any paved, concrete trail in a park?
Well, you have, you have sidewalks that were probably thirty, forty years old, that are less than ten feet wide versus a trail system that has a wider one, but you would have to establish that trail system as not being a sidewalk. It would have to be a trail system dedicated to bikes, scooters, because then it's not a sidewalk, it's, it's a different classification. I think you might be able to thread that needle. I've never had anyone ask me until about three minutes ago.
Yeah, no, it's, it's just, I saw the, it says on a sidewalk, and I just, you know, I understand what a sidewalk is, of course, but I don't know necessarily that a twelve-foot wide paved concrete path through a park is truly a sidewalk in that sense.
Yeah. Sidewalk is different from a pedestrian way versus a trail system.
Could we at least prohibit the e-bikes on the paved services? I mean, if we're doing it on the unimproved surfaces at the nature park?
The trouble is, we euphemistically call all those things sidewalks, and the statute that doesn't define what a sidewalk is. And generally, if you were to go to a textbook definition, be in a pedestrian way, not a bike way, not a scooter way, not a skateboard way, but for pedestrians. And so if we identified and maybe wrote the ordinance that we had sidewalks, now you're asking someone downtown Dallas with a black robe to make that distinction. I don't have much faith in that. But I think literally, if you had a trail system dedicated to vehicles of some kind, like bicycles and scooters and skateboards and those kinds of things, I think you could make that dichotomy, that it's not a sidewalk, it's really a, a passageway for a vehicle.
But could we characterize our trails at the, the paved trails at our parks as something other than a sidewalk to prohibit the use of e-bikes on those?
I, it'd be worth looking into. And try to define it those, that way, we would have to do some work on our park plan and designation and some other things to make that dichotomy and make sense of that dichotomy. But if you're allowing pedestrians, that, I, I would share with the chief that I, I will not ride a bicycle on a sidewalk because of e-bikes. They're dangerous.
Well, and, you know.
I used to ride the Campion Trail a lot, and I won't get on it with a bike.
I mean, it's one thing to, to have, you know, a kid on a bicycle out at Andy Brown East or an adult on a bicycle out there, but this kid was doing like twenty-five miles an hour in a full wheelie for, you know, thirty yards. And, you know, and all, all that's around there are kids on bikes and people with dogs, you know? So just, it seems incongruent to what the use is.
Especially with throttle bikes. Because if they're not pedal assisted, then, you know, a, a small child could actually go a lot faster than their capability and strength will allow them to safely operate that thing, whatever it is.
I mean, I'm just one voice, but I, I would favor looking into that to see.
We'll look into that.
As a safety matter.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief, and thank you, Mr. Hager.
Right. Councilmember Prem Kumar.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, thanks for the presentation. I've also heard from residents that they're in support of the measure that you've put forward, specifically on item nine, Chief. I have heard people support the concept of having helmets up to age sixteen. Have you heard anyone object to that?
No, it's been completely the other way. Anybody I've mentioned this to is almost like it's, it's a long time coming, so.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay. Chief, I had one question. There are a number of other, I don't even know what to call them, devices that are used. They're not bicycles, they're not scooters, they're the, the, they're almost like skateboards, but powered, you know, the self-balancing. Where do those fit into the, to the regulations? Would they be treated as an e-bike or as a skateboard?
So yes, as a skateboard, but not as an e-bike. Some of these electronic, I hate to call them vehicles, but.
Well, they were, I think it was hover, hover?
Hoverboards.
Hoverboard or something like that?
They're not going to fall into this category. I know that. I would have to ask, I don't know where those fall into the law elsewhere, if anywhere. Because I asked my legal advisor, I said, so not all these e-bikes max out at twenty-eight miles an hour? You can modify them, they can go faster, you can actually buy them off the racks to go much faster. What is that called? Is that a moped now? Is that an electric motorcycle? And he sent me, basically, the law hasn't caught up to that yet. And maybe in the future, that'll be an attorney general question. That's what golf carts and driver's licenses, that's how that came about, was attorney general's opinions. So I think a lot of these, again, it's a, it's a new phenomenon, the laws aren't catching up, and eventually, we're going to be reaching out to the attorney generals, looking for guidance, because we just don't know.
Okay. Thank you. Well, like Councilmember Prem Kumar, I also had a, a very pointed email from a citizen supported, supporting, you know, increasing the regulations, so. Councilmember Walker, I did have a comment, you know, the, the risk we run into is if we start to regulate the e-bikes, it will apply to the bicycles as well. And so if we start to say no, if we start to limit tho, the, the e-bikes on our park trails or sidewalks, or whatever you want to call them, that would apply to bicycles as well. And that was what this council, at least my understanding, was hesitant to, to move forward with.
Yeah, I think there's some way we can distinguish that.
Well, I, that's something that the legislature probably needs to address at this point. Okay. Anybody have any, oh. Councilmember Neves.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, just a quick question on a definition. On item eight, there's something referenced called a coaster. Is that? I want to make sure that I know what that is. What I, what I found online is it's a bicycle that just has a different type of braking system, is that correct?
I'll be honest with you, I don't know.
Okay. All right. I'm not trying to put you on the spot, it's just I forgot to ask you that question ahead of time. And that's the thing is, I just wanted to make sure I understood what the definition of a coaster was before we put a, a rule into effect.
Yeah, that one's already on the books, so.
Oh, it's already on the books?
Yeah, we're just adding e-bikes to that list of.
Oh, okay. All right. So this is nothing new that we are, like, nothing, okay. All right, all right. That actually helps me a lot, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So we have two items before us that Chief talked about, items eight and nine. I'm going to read nine into the record, just, which is consider approval of ordinance amending Chapter eight, traffic regulations, Article eight dash six, section eight dash six dash one. Definitions amending protective headwear, Chapter eight, traffic regulations by adding a new definition, e-bicycle, and amending section eight dash six dash two. Bicycle helmet required to include new terms to subsections A, B, and D one, as well as amending subsection C, to increase the helmet age requirement from fourteen years to sixteen years of age, and authorizing the mayor to sign. Council, we need to vote on these separately, I understand, so I will accept a motion for item number eight. Councilmember Hill?
I'd like to make a motion to approve item number eight.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Councilmember Neves, all in favor?
Walker Carroll Neves, Prem Kumar Hill, none opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Okay, and for item number nine? Councilmember Prem Kumar.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to propose that we close a public hearing on item number nine.
No public, no public hearing.
I'd like to close item number nine and approve it.
Okay. We have a motion to approve item number nine. Do I have a second? Councilmember Hill, all in favor?
Walker Carroll Neves, Prem Kumar Hill, none opposed. Motion carries.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it. Keep us up to date on the, the evolving regulation and rules, if you would, please, sir.
I will.
All right. Item number ten is a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing. And consider approval of a resolution granting a distance variance of two hundred and forty-one feet to St. Anne's Catholic Parish for a temporary event from the three hundred foot prohibited requirement for the onsite premise sale of alcoholic beverages with an address being one eighty Samuel Boulevard, and authorizing the mayor to sign. Ms. Hurley?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So the item before you tonight is a public hearing to request of two hundred and forty-one foot distance variance for St. Anne's Catholic Parish for their upcoming carnival. For the last three years, City Council has granted the distance variance that allows St. Anne's to sell beer and wine at their annual carnival. The dates for the carnival this year will be September fifth through the seventh, and the times for the carnival will be Friday, September fifth, from five PM to eleven PM, Saturday, September sixth, from ten AM to eleven PM, Sunday, September seventh, from one PM to six PM. St. Anne's is located at one eighty Samuel Boulevard, and so this slide on the screen before you shows an aerial site plan of St. Anne's with a three hundred foot radius. So as you can see, there are two schools and one church within the three hundred feet of, within three hundred feet of the location of the church. Section six dash sixteen dash three of the city's code of ordinances prohibits the sale of alcohol within, within three hundred feet of a church, public school, or private school. So the request for a variance tonight is temporary, and if granted, the variance, the distance variance will begin at twelve oh one AM Thursday, September fourth, through twelve oh one AM Monday, September eighth. St. Anne's is required to receive approval from local officials in order to obtain a Texas Alcoholic Beverage Commission temporary event permit. And section six dash sixteen dash four of the code of ordinances speaks to council's discretion to allow for these variances. This slide shows an aerial site plan of St. Anne's carnival and the layout for the different activities. The circle item titled Parish Pub will be where the alcohol is sold. The requser has been informed by the vendor that patrons are allowed to mingle and roam on the premises of St. Anne's with alcohol. However, they are not allowed to leave the premises with alcohol in hand. So again, I'd like to remind council that this request for a, for a variance is temporary, and if granted, will only cover the dates and times of the carnival. Notice of the public hearing was placed in the Irving Rambler on July twelfth, and as of today, staff has not received any feedback from the community. So with that, I'll do my best to answer any questions you have.
All right. Thank you very much. Council, do you have any questions for Ms. Hurley? Councilmember Neves?
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Hurley, so it's based on your presentation, so everything is pretty much exactly the same as it has been the past three years. No changes to the, their request or hours? I think the hours sounded the same from the, the Thursday to the Monday that we've heard before. Anything different?
From my understanding, there's nothing different.
There is what I'm different.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
So in, in just a moment, we'll get around to that. Do you have any other, council, do you have any other questions for Ms. Hurley? Councilmember Prem Kumar?
Thank you, Mayor. And Ms. Hurley, I think this is a question that my colleague Kevin had asked last year. There's never been an issue with this variance in the past, correct?
I'm going to look to Chief Barton to answer that question for you, so.
Thank you.
So as to that question, we have not had any problems at all with, with this. We did make one arrest last year, excuse me. It was alcohol related, but had nothing to do with the church. The person showed up in the condition they were in, so we have not had any issues that I can even remember. So everything's always gone well.
Thank you, Chief.
Any other questions for Ms. Hurley? Right, this is a public hearing. We had no one signed up to speak, so I'll ask if the applicant would like to come down and make a comments of their own. And name an address for the record, please, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. My name's Ken Whistler. I'm at one sixty-nine Glendale, here in Kapel. The last four years, I've overseen this. This will be our fourth year. We did take the staffing in-house last year, took volunteers, we all got server license, so that was a slight change as opposed to a company coming into it. The one thing that's changed this year is if you see the area that's marked for bingo, during our bingo sessions on Friday night and Saturday night, we are going to set up a small. a small table serving area in there as well. So I want to be clear on that. It's the parish pub that's circled, that's the same location, but up in the far corner of the property, we will set up a table during bingo where we normally sell popcorn and soft, soft drinks. Are you with me on that, on that part? Okay. I just want to be very transparent about the one change, if anybody was out there and had a question, so.
All right. Thank you. Ken, I believe, uh, Councilmember Nevels has a question?
Just so I make sure I understand the map, that bingo, that's the old, like, CC's location?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that, that section right there, all the way up at Sandy Lake Boulevard.
Are you prepared to handle the unruly bingo attendees?
We'll do our best.
Okay, all right, understood, understood.
Counsel, any other questions?
And I'll, I'll say one more thing. Honestly, we did that because we didn't like the look of selling to, like, one person coming and getting four of them with the statement they were taking them over to bingo. So we're gonna restrict it to two per person that comes through, like you would at a ballgame or an event. That's something we learned last year that was different. So part of that is to help by having a station up there at Bingo, so we don't have somebody carrying a truckload of beer or wine across the parking lot, so. Hope that helps. Thank you for your support.
All right. Thank you. Counsel, any other questions? Seeing none, I will accept a motion. Councilmember Walker?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to approve, uh, let me close the public hearing and approve item two.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Councilmember Nevels, all in favor?
Walker, Carol, Nevels, Prem Kamar, Hill, none opposed, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Item number 11 is our city manager's report with project updates, future agendas, and direction from work session.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, we're excited to announce the launch of the Vision 2040 Refresh Project. This is a citywide effort to gather community input, ensure that our long-term strategic plan continues to reflect the community's needs. Please visit the project site at capeltx.gov backslash 2040 refresh to complete our short survey and add your thoughts to the ideas wall. Uh, those that will, that complete the survey are eligible to pick up a free Capel t-shirt. Dart will close the rail crossings at Southwestern Boulevard and Moore Road next week. Southwestern Boulevard between South Capel Road and Denton Tap Road will be closed fully from 7:00 a.m. on Monday, July 28th through 7:00 p.m. on Tuesday, the 29th. Moore Road between East Beltline and Carter Drive will be fully closed from 7:00 a.m. on Friday, August 1st through 7:00 p.m. on Saturday, August 2nd. Counsel will perform a final review of the proposed budget and discuss the proposed tax rate, beginning at 6:00 p.m. on Monday, July 28th at Town Center. If you're unable to attend but have budget-related questions or comments, please email us at budgetinput@capeltx.gov. Please join us to celebrate the grand opening of Fire Station Number Five and ribbon cutting um, at 9:00 a.m. on Tuesday, July 29th, and that is located at 157 South Moore Road. Our Capel Emergency Water Interconnect Project is finishing up, our contractor is finishing up the, the connection, um, up on Denton Tap Road. And finally, Magnolia Park, the contractor completed the installation of the upper gabion basket and the gabion mattress, and they are working on setting forms for the trail and are scheduled to pour concrete on Thursday of this week. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Item number 12 is Mayor and Council reports on recent and upcoming events. Uh, please join us on Friday, uh, July 25th at Life Safety Park, when, when we will host an Open Doors. This is at 820 South Capel Road. We'll be exploring the select parts of the facility with learning opportunities at each spot. We'll learn about the history of the Capel Fire Department, practice pedestrian safety, chat with a firefighter, and more. Registration is free and encouraged, but not required. Hygiene Donation Drive, the Cosby Library is currently collecting hygiene items to benefit Metrocrest Services. These items will help promote health wellness and empowerment to local families and seniors in crises. You can learn more about the donation drive by visiting the library's website at capeltx.gov/library. The last day of the drive will be July 31st. Our Boards and Commissions' application process is starting on August the 11th. Please participate in local government and give back to the community by serving on one of the City of Capel's boards or commissions. The city is seeking passionate individuals to be part of the boards and commissions that help guide development, guide future needs, regulations, and more for the city. This will open on August 11th. More information will be coming soon on the website and social media. Item number 13 are council committee reports concerning items of community involvement with no council action or deliberation permitted. Item A is our CFB ISD LISD liaison with Councilmember Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. Okay, uh, the moment you've all been waiting for. Uh, back to school for Louisville ISD is August 12th on Tuesday. Uh, you can download the, uh, full academic calendar, including school hours, at lisd.net backslash cal. The district's annual back-to-school fair, uh, will take place Tuesday, uh, July 29th, uh, at Hedrick Middle School. Uh, this event provides thousands of students with backpacks and school supplies to help them, uh, get, get, uh, off to a good start for the year. For more information about, uh, back-to-school, um, and resources, you can go to lisd.net backslash b2s. And I'd like to give a big congratulations to, um, LISD Superintendent, Dr. Lori Rapp, who was, um, named Region 11 Superintendent of the Year. And that is all I have. Don't have anything for CFP.
Thank you very much. Items B and C are with Councilmember Nevels. The first one is the CISD Liaison, and then Capel Seniors.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Uh, just a couple of things about Capel ISD. So, uh, first day of school is coming up soon. It'll be August 13th, so make sure you guys have that on your calendar. Um, I reached out to, um, uh, Interim Superintendent Doug Williams, and he asked me to share a couple of things with the community. I do want to just go ahead and put this disclaimer out there, reminding everyone that, uh, Capel ISD is a separamental, separate governmental entity from the, uh, the City of Capel. So, a couple of notes, um, they are the, uh, Superintendent Williams and the Board of Trustees, they are working on a multi-year balanced budget plan. So the trustees reviewed a draft plan to address declining enrollment, uh, sustain instructional quality, and ensure long-term financial health. So they are currently working through that. A couple of other, uh, facility updates, um, some big news for New Tech High at Capel. Uh, they are working on two current options for that school's future. Uh, remaining at the current location with expanded open enrollment and a reimagined model, or they're working on reloading, relocating it to Capel High School campus and reimagine it as a school within a school setting. Recommendations, um, uh, said, uh, let's see, oh, board action is expected to be presented, or to happen on August 11th. Uh, they are also working on elementary enrollment and campus planning. The district shared a, uh, possible revised timeline due to continued elementary enrollment declines and the desire to have, uh, for the most accurate data. So, uh, September 4th, they're working on, uh, data being sent to Zonda Demographics the week of September 8th. Uh, they're proposing some community input meetings, September 22nd, board workshops with recommendations, uh, also the week of, uh, September 22nd, holding neighborhood meetings to gather input. And then, uh, September 29th, uh, hold their regular board meeting. And then, uh, week of October 6th, a board workshop for final action on, uh, elementary enrollment and potential of, uh, additional, uh, campus consolidations. Uh, let's see here. And then there is a district properties and facilities team that has been created to begin to review and discuss options for properties and facilities. And, um, I've been asked to serve on that as well, so excited to, uh, be able to, uh, serve Capel ISD in that regard as well. So we'll, uh, continue to keep this council informed about what comes of that. Uh, a couple of other quick notes, uh, two students will be recognized for outstanding accomplishments. Uh, CHS senior, Shreya Geta, um, is the Congressional Award Gold Medal recipient, and New Tech senior, Andy Coffey, has been selected to serve as the Hope Squad, na, on the Hope Squad National Council. And then one last note that Superintendent, uh, Williams shared was, "The district has reduced the number of employees by 71 since this time last year in efforts to continue deficit reduction. This has been accomplished primarily through attrition and consolidation of some positions, uh, but without directly affecting the classrooms." So those are the notes, uh, that our interim superintendent shared. All right, and then, uh, just a quick note on Capel seniors. Uh, we do have our, uh, monthly, uh, council update with our seniors tomorrow. Uh, anyone on the council is invited, so if you guys are interested, uh, just let me know, get with me after, and I'm sure the seniors would love a visit from you. But, uh, activity at the senior center's been really good. Uh, on Monday, uh, they had a cornhole tournament, very excited about that. My mom didn't tell me that she won, so she probably didn't win. Um, and then, um, let's hear, uh, and then, oh, uh, also the seniors have al, also been enjoying the Saturday, uh, the one Saturday per month opening, uh, so, uh, looking to continue to see that, uh, grow and hopefully maybe add more weekend dates on that. So that concludes my reports.
Thank you very much. Item number 14 are public service announcements concerning items of community interest with no council action or deliberation permitted. Do we have any PSAs? Seeing none, there was no necessary action from our executive session, so therefore, there being no further business before this body, we are adjourned at 8:13 p.m.